Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending Lebanon City Council meeting. I apologize for the delay. We've had long agendas tonight. There's a lot of stuff going on, so I appreciate everyone's patience before kicking this meeting off tonight. So, first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we'll move on. Again, this is the February 12th Lebanon City Council meeting, 2018. We'll move on to the roll call of members. Clerk, call the room.
Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Coats.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland, absent. Councilman Lamar.
Here.
Councilman Fleming.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, next item up is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. Further discussion, questions, comments?
No, sir.
Do we need separate motions for the special as well as this? So, is this the motion for...
That's the one for January 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
So, we motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd. And in a second? I believe.
Dan did it.
Who did? Dan did it? Okay.
Motion in a second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, and now we need a motion to approve the special.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, first item up we have tonight is actually, we have a new member of the Lebanon Fire Department family. Would firefighter Wes Manker please step forward and chief pass.
Where would you like us to stand?
So, I'll stand here to administer it, and then if you want to stand right here. So, tonight, we have a new firefighter join our ranks here, and I'll swear you in, Wes, and we'll give you a minute to say a few words, all right? All right, so if you would place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. Nope, you want to slide over so they can see on TV? Actually. See camera other side?
We're going to go backwards.
There you go.
There we go. Actually, you're right there. There we go. There we go. Yeah, you're the only one, not me.
You've got all this fancy new technology.
I know, right? All these camera angles.
Just staring your way.
All right, so repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Wes Manker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Fire Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Fire Department.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
We would like to welcome Wes and his wife as the newest members of the Lebanon Fire Department family.
Thank you, Chief.
We still get the speech, right? I know we're running late, but we get the speech.
Normally, they do the National Anthem.
Yeah. You guys want to go from that meeting to this.
Good night, Wes. Thank you, Wes, and welcome. Hope you stay safe, and you have a great administration, so just make sure you follow your orders and learn as much as you can. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, gentlemen. Have a great night. Be safe.
I know it was a long wait for that, guys. Sorry. All right, with that, move on to old business. So, we do have an ordinance up tonight for second reading, which is ordinance 2018-01 concerning text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance concerning driveway widths, definitions of permitted uses. Ben, you want to introduce this real quick?
Sure, just a quick overview of what we discussed last month. We got a couple of different text amendments that we're considering tonight. The first is dealing with residential driveway widths. We made some additional changes where if you have a property that has a three-car front-load garage and a property width of at least 100 feet, they could be permitted increase in the drive width up to 30 feet, where 20 feet is normally what is the maximum required. So, that would just allow some additional width there for the folks that have that three-car front-load garage, make access a little bit easier into that third bay. The other amendments that are being considered tonight are all dealing with permitted uses in the PBI, Plan Business Industrial Zoning District. We made some changes to permit warehousing, distribution, and light manufacturing uses within the PBI district permitted by right, where their conditional use now has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. From an economic development perspective, I feel this is a much stronger set of permitted uses, where somebody coming to the business park, which is exactly the type of use we want, we don't want them to have to go to the BZI process just to permit their use. We want it permitted by right. And so, the changes made there are just the changes to permitted use table, a couple of changes to the definitions in the definition section, just to clean up all those items and make sure that they're permitted in every section in our ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment from the audience? Okay, this ordinance is up on second reading. It was held at a public hearing at the last meeting and is on second reading tonight. So, we entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2018-01.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance 2018-02, or 01, I'm sorry, the text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe that was Councilman Campbell. A motion in a second. All those... Further discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, ordinance 2018-01 passed unanimously. Thank you, Ben. Okay, is there any other old business coming for the council? Okay, then move on to new business. So, we have ordinance 2018-02 concerning Indiana Municipal Power Agency Economic Development Rider. We have Jeff Jacob with us here from the Utilities. He's the legal counsel for the Lebanon Utilities. From my understanding, this is more of a cleanup issue from the ordinance we passed last year, but I'll turn it over to Jeff to explain.
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Mayor, you're exactly right. This is a cleanup issue. As you recall, late last year, this body adopted an economic development rider, and it was a qualified, or a pass-through savings for qualified electric users. Basically, a large power user, 1,000 kilowatts of new power load plus $1 million in new construction or expansion of a business, would qualify for a descending annualized percentage pass-through savings of their electric bill, their wholesale rate. Basically, the IMPA, which is the co-op electric provider, would pass this through to incentivize new businesses to come into their member territories. What happened was, and IMPA basically has sponsored this entire process to remind the council there will be no cost to the ratepayers, no cost to the city or to the utility for this electric percentage savings. And that includes taking this matter in front of the IURC. So, the process was that the 61 members, give or take a few, of IMPA passed similar ordinances to what Lebanon passed. The IMPA then took a resolution in front of the IURC and said, hey, here are ordinances from our 61 members. They included with their resolution an Exhibit A, and that Exhibit A matched, excuse me, it matched what this body passed. Unfortunately, our Exhibit As were transposed, and so the city council adopted IMPA's Exhibit A resolution, or their Exhibit A, where we should have passed the city's own Exhibit A setting out the rate schedule. So, instead of saying customer, it said member, and it had some specifics that were unique to IMPA seeking IURC approval on behalf of its member entities rather than on behalf of customers. So, really, it is a cleanup issue, and we need to, I'm asking for the city council to adopt a new ordinance that substitutes the correct Exhibit A for what was passed in 2017. I'm happy to answer any questions. There's no substantive changes to the rate. It's basically some verbiage that was in the Exhibit A that IMPA supplied to us rather than one crafted for the city or a specific member user.
Counsel.
In conjunction with that, it is our hope that you would also, given that this is somewhat administrative in nature, you've substantively considered this matter before, we would also ask that you waive second reading and allow this to move forward. The next step of this would be IMPA's waiting on us to finalize this, and they will take it to the IURC and champion this rate change in front of the IURC on behalf of its members.
So, this was noticed as a public hearing. At this point, I will open the public hearing to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak concerning ordinance 2018-02? As I suspected, we will close the public hearing on ordinance 2018-02 now. Counsel, asking your will here. We've had a request to suspend the rules and move directly to second reading tonight. Again, we have voted on this very similar ordinance. Again, it's a more technical in nature, however, did require a new ordinance to be written. So, any consent from council to suspend the rules and move to second reading tonight?
I agree with that.
Keith, I know you're normally the one that has concerns with it. You okay with this one? Okay, we entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
We have motion to suspend the rules. Again, this has to be unanimous in order to suspend the rules, in order to remove ordinance 2018-02 to second reading. We have motion to suspend the rules in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, rules are currently suspended. We will move to a second reading on ordinance 2018-02. Turn it over to Rob for second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as Jeff indicated, this is ordinance 2018-02, and it essentially amends and replaces ordinance 2017-11 with this, and as, again, as Jeff indicated, Exhibit A are the principal changes in here, just cleanup items, so.
Any further discussion, comments, questions?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2018-02.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance 2018-02 concerning the Indiana Municipal Power Agency Economic Development Rider.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second. Good.
Motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance 2018-02 passes on second reading. Thank you, Jeff.
Counsel, thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, with that, we return to regular order, and we'll move on to Resolution 2018-03. The next three items will be, or the next two items we'll be considering are in regards to the downtown funding of the bond issuances. So, I'll actually have Kevin, could you do a, you've already done twice tonight, but can you do a two-minute spiel on the downtown, just to remind everybody at home?
We all heard it. Don't do it.
Thank you, and good evening. Yes, let's try to do this in two minutes. The project is essentially, excuse me, the reconstruction of Main Street, Meridian Street, and Washington Street, including the area around the Courthouse Square, as well as Main Street over to west to Patterson Street, Patterson Street north to the intersection with the Big Four Trail. The project reconstruction would include the construction of the Big Four Trail, extending it from its current terminus on Patterson Street to the downtown square and across the south side of the square along Main Street. On the square, it would include the reconstruction of the street to a brick paver, concrete paver driving surface, all-new curbs, landscaping, water main utilities, water services to the buildings, as well as landscaping, architectural treatments, street furniture, and last but not least, including the courthouse wall, replacing that existing concrete wall with a limestone seat wall in keeping with the architecture of the courthouse. Oh, and one other improvement would be the intersection upgrades at State Road 39 and Main Street, State Road 39 and Washington Street, and State Road 32 and Meridian. Those intersections will be upgraded with new surface overlays, new crosswalks, new ADA appearances, new lighting, and most importantly, most noticeable would be the replacement of the existing traffic light signal poles. So, the stoplight poles will be replaced again with decorative wrought iron appearance black material. Good enough?
I think that was two minutes, too. Any questions for Kevin concerning the scope of the project?
No.
Okay, now we'll have Brian from LBO step forward as well, give a brief financial overview as well.
One minute.
This is the same report that you've seen. Does everybody have their copies that I gave out? Okay, so we're going to do this with two schedules. The first schedule is sources and usage for the project, which explains why we have it split out into two bond issues. Just a real quick recap on that. So, we're doing a redevelopment district bond, so that is through the redevelopment district, counting against the 2% debt limit for the redevelopment district, and that's for the portions that cover the indot projects, the county project, and then the private property portion of the projects. The second bond issue is a lease financing, which does not count towards your 2% debt limit. It can only be used for projects that the city controls the rights to, and so that's the remaining portion of the project. That's why we have it split out into two bond issues. Originally, we thought about one lease rental bond. Can't do that, so that's why we have it split out into two bonds. The note, one item I'd want to note on this schedule, which is different than some of the bonds we've done in the past, is for the debt service reserve, which you need to have for any type of TIF bond with a property tax backup. We're funding it, or planning to fund it, through a surety policy, which is you pay a percentage of the cost of that reserve, but you still have the same impact. So, you still have a fully funded reserve, it's just buying kind of an insurance policy at premium, if you will, and it's 4% of the reserve amount. Instead of funding it with cash at hand, that frees up those dollars to go towards the project costs. It's more efficient with the dollars that way. So, the two bond issues combined are about $11 million is what our estimate is at this point in time. The actual construction cost number will be updated once the bids come in at that point in time, but based upon the current estimates, that's what the two bond issues together add up to. And then the second schedule, this is going counterintuitive. Oh, my God, seriously. Okay, so this schedule shows the TIF revenue, which is anticipated to pay the bonds, and that comes from the industrial park TIF area. It's the current TIF that's in the area, current projects in the area, plus abatement roll-offs. No additional growth is built into these numbers, so it's conservative in that regard. And as you can see, the TIF revenues rise from about $2 million up to $2.6 million, and then they start to decrease again. And just to remind you, that is when some of the TIF area, the TIF area starts to expire. There's different phasing in of that TIF area. You reach the maturity date, so those roll off, so it decreases to about $1,700,000 for a couple of years, and then another large chunk rolls off, and then you're down to about $600,000 from there to the end of the bonds. And that's what we use to structure the bonds. We structured it based upon level coverage off to the far right. You can see those numbers are around 130%, and so that is what we use to structure the bond issue. That's why you'll see the debt service is not level like some of the bonds we're typically used to seeing. It's because we're wrapping it around the outstanding debt service and that revenue stream. So, that's why it's kind of a weird-looking structure, and also that, just to bring this up, it's also why we're going through a negotiated sale for the bonds as opposed to a competitive sale. We really need that flexibility to be able to structure both of those bonds simultaneously, and going through that process with one single underwriter is the best way to go about that process. And we received five different proposals back today. Have not looked at those yet. Been up here. So, we're going to look at those in the next couple of days. We'll talk with the city about which underwriter to go with, and then we'll negotiate the bonds with that underwriter. So, I know that was quick. Any questions? Anything else?
Just one.
Yep.
Would you just briefly tell the public how this money gets paid back?
Yeah, it's going to be paid from the industrial park TIF revenues, and so that's the, a number of the different areas out there. The piece that's not included is the Ken Foods TIF area. It's excluded from it, but everything else that's in the industrial park.
There's no property tax.
Correct.
The property tax is simply there as a, we don't anticipate using it, it's simply there as a backup and for marketing purposes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Correct, yeah, that's a great point, Mike. There will be no impact on property taxes with this bond issuance. Any other questions for Brian? I know we covered a lot of this at our working session.
Brian, I have one question. I noticed in the fine print down below, did it say the project would be finished by July of 19, was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Kevin, is that right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
But is the project supposed to be finished, all of it, by July of 19?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so the three sides of the square is, that's the, that's the 2018 project, and then the Main Street reconstruction is for in 2019. So, it's kind of split that way. Any further questions from Brian or Kevin? Okay, with that, we'll move on to Resolution 2018-03, which is a consideration by the common council approving a lease between the Lebanon Redevelopment Authority and the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission and the issuance of lease rental bonds by the Lebanon Redevelopment Authority and other matters related thereto. Rob, you want to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor, and again, this, as you've indicated and heard at a prior meeting, Resolution 2018 would be a resolution by this council approving the lease between the Lebanon Redevelopment Authority and the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. It would approve the issuance of the lease rental bonds by the Lebanon Redevelopment Authority. It states that the council finds that issuing the bonds, the execution of the lease, and the trust and indenture are in the public interest of the citizens of the city and for the proper public purposes of the authority, the commission, and the city. The issuance of the lease rental bonds of 2018 in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,200,000 is hereby approved. The lease in form is hereby approved. The trust and indenture in form attached to this is hereby approved, and that the city shall transfer any of its interests in the real estate to the authority in exchange for the authority's commitment to issue the bonds.
Thank you, Rob. So, that is Resolution 2018-03. Is there any public comment concerning this resolution? Okay, any further discussion from council, or would entertain a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 2018-03.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2018-03 passed unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, next item up here is Resolution 2018-04, which is a consideration by the common council approving the issuance of Lebanon Redevelopment Commission bonds by the Lebanon Redevelopment District. So, the resolution before was the lease rental. This is now the redevelopment district bonds, redevelopment commission bonds. Rob, you introduce Resolution 2018-04.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. Again, as the mayor indicated, 2018 is a resolution by the council approving the issuance of the redevelopment district bonds, and these would be in an amount not to exceed $2.96 million. The council would find that by providing for the financing of the project by the commission that it's in the public interest of the citizens of the city, and that the project is proper, a proper public purpose of the commission and the city, that the redevelopment district bonds of 2018 are hereby approved, that the mayor, the president, and the council, and the clerk treasurer hereby authorized to take all such actions and execute all such instruments as are necessary and desirable to carry out the transactions contemplated by this resolution.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment, questions, concerns from the public? I take that you guys are all excited about this downtown as much as I am. So, any questions, discussion from council?
Nope.
Okay, would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2018-04.
We have motion to approve Resolution 2018-04. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, council. Resolution 2018-04 passed unanimously. Just a brief side note, I really do believe that this is a, will be a transformational project for the city. I'm very excited to oversee this and really excited to see the changes that this, and the light this will bring to our downtown, and hopefully turn, begin a new chapter for downtown Lebanon, so very excited for that. Appreciate all the council's willingness to work with us on that, as well as all the, all the boards and commissions to make that possible as well, too, so. All right, next item up here is Resolution 2018-05, which is a consideration by the common council regarding the designation of an economic revitalization area, or ERA. Turn that over to Rob to introduce that one as well.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Thank you. Sorry.
Yes, Mayor and council, this Resolution 2018-05 is a resolution for the council regarding the designation of an economic revitalization area, and as you may recall, in order to provide certain incentives for a project, we need to have an economic revitalization area designated. This resolution, 2018-5, would provide that the areas located within the corporate boundaries of the city, that this area that's set forth in Exhibit A would be declared to be an economic revitalization area, and that the council would, or would have a public hearing on February 26th, and it should publish and cause this resolution to be published pursuant to statutory requirements, I believe, and then pursuant to 2B of the Act, a copy of this resolution would be filed with the Boone County Treasurer, as well as the council pursuant to the Act shall file a copy of this resolution, notice with each taxing unit that has authority to levy property taxes in the geographic area within the area designated by this resolution. I think Ben Worrell's here, if you'd like for him to talk a little bit as well.
Yeah, and just so council's aware, this is the parcel directly south of Hendrickson, between, near Maplehurst and XPO. There's a area in the business park right there on Mountain Zion Road, and that's the parcel we're talking about. So, turn it over to Ben to introduce this, or talk about it.
Ben Worrell, Boone County Economic Development Corporation. I'm the deputy director there. Not much more to add to that, as Rob stated in the declaration there, that ERAs are simply a tool, mechanism for us to be able to move forward with other incentive opportunities. So, we've had several projects that are looking at the Lebanon area, and again, this helps to lay the groundwork to be able to move forward with those types of projects.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any questions, comments from council concerning Resolution 2018-05? Any public comment? Okay, would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-05?
I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 2018-05.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Again.
Motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2018-05 passed unanimously. All right, a couple more of these guys. All right, next item up here is Resolution 2018-06, which is a consideration by the common council regarding certain personal property tax abatement deductions. Would this all have been Worrell introduced this? This is Project Greenlight is the name of, that this was going, the code name by, but we will, I'm sure, hear more information from Ben now.
Thank you very much. Again, as said, this project was going under the name of Project Greenlight. This was a project that started back in the early part of 2017, and pleased to announce that they are considering the Lebanon area. This is Consolidated Container Corporation, which is, actually, we have a representative here tonight, Mr. Ken David. He came all the way from Michigan to be here tonight to represent the company. So, again, thank you, Ken, for being here tonight. As stated inside the declaration that's in front of you there, we are looking at a personal property abatement for three years, and again, the numbers are stated there, just over $4 million in personal property, looking at about 10 jobs or so for the area, but we look to see a return on that investment certainly in a, just after, just after year three.
Okay, so Ben, could you talk a little bit about the company and why they chose to locate here and how they work?
Absolutely. So, as you may have heard from Molly Whitehead, our executive director previously, one of the areas that we found of interest for Lebanon and Boone County is food-based manufacturing. Certainly, inside of that, it's several factors that prove favorable, one of which is food-based manufacturing is typically more recession resilient than other companies that may be out there, so we're always happy to entertain food-based manufacturing companies that are coming forward, but also we see there's further supply chain that happens around food-based manufacturing. And Consolidated Container Corporation is one of those, one of those entities. And actually, if I can have Ken come forward, just to be able to talk about Consolidated Container just very briefly, and also to just present himself to you. Container just very briefly, and also to just present himself to you.
It'd be great.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. David.
Council members, and thanks to Ben for inviting me to be here this evening. Consolidated Container is very, very pleased with the positive information that we've gotten in the community and the positive support we've gotten from everybody that our folks have been working with Ben's group, and we really appreciate that. We are rigid plastic container manufacturers, as Ben mentioned, and we work with food companies throughout the U.S. and also industrial and chemical companies, but food is a large part of our business. And we're excited to be part of this community. We're excited to be putting in operation in the community later this year, and we really appreciate the positive support that's been given to us by all the members of the community we've enacted with. Any questions about us? We're, basically, when you go to the grocery store and you pick up a container of food products, edible oils, mayonnaise, salad dressings, chances are we've made that container or those like it. So if you're not happy with the container, we're the, you don't like it, doesn't work right, we're the ones.
And you're going to be inside of Ken Foods?
That is correct. That is correct, sir.
So I had a chance, when I toured Ken's Foods facility in Boston last year, so they have a very similar set of partnership with them in their Marlboro plant, and it's pretty impressive. It's probably about within, what, five minutes it comes off your assembly line, it's filled with ranch dressing? It's a pretty fast process. So it's definitely a vertical integration, it makes a lot of sense. So very excited, it's another growing partnership we have with Consolidated Container and Ken's Foods.
Yes.
Any questions for, questions for Ken?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and you picked a busy night to come.
Yeah, thanks for enduring our meetings.
Yes, absolutely.
Any further discussion, comments, questions for Ben concerning Resolution twenty eighteen dash oh six? Okay, I'll have Rob read that.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero six regarding certain personal property tax abatement deductions for Consolidated Container Corporation LP. The SB one form is attached as Exhibit A, and again, the proposed project would be installed at nine seventeen Edwards Drive, Lebanon, Indiana, and that's more particularly described in Exhibit B, and there's a map on Exhibit C. This resolution states that the proposed project would be located in the area which has been confirmed as an economic revitalization area. Pursuant to the Act, the form SB one submitted by the applicant is hereby approved. Based on the information in the SB one form, the council makes the following findings. The estimate of four million, three hundred ninety thousand as the cost of new manufacturing equipment to be installed is reasonable for projects of that nature. The estimate of hiring ten new individuals who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The estimate of three hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars for aggregate annual salaries of those individuals can reasonably be expected to result from this project. The other benefits about which information has been presented to the council are benefits that can reasonably be expected to result from the project, and the totality of the benefits sufficiently justify the granting of this personal property tax abatement. Again, as Ben indicated, year one, seventy-five, year two, fifty, year three, fifty. Pursuant to the Act, the council shall cause this, a certified copy of this resolution to be filed with the Boone County Auditor.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any further comments, questions?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, would entertain a motion concerning Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six.
Make a motion we pass Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six has passed unanimously. Welcome to Lebanon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item up here is Lebanon Utilities, sixty-nine KV line imminent domain procedure request from Jeff Jacobs. Jeff Jacob, excuse me.
Good evening again, council. I wanted to update you with some good news and a request moving forward. The sixty-nine KV line, we have made quite a bit of progress, and specifically, there was a parcel, last time I was in front of you, that I heard loud and clear needed to be addressed on the north side of the park, and I'm pleased to report to you that not only has that parcel been resolved, but I believe it's been resolved satisfactorily to all parties, and most importantly, to the property owner. And that, to date, has been our trickiest land acquisition issue. We have not closed on that piece, but we have a purchase agreement signed, and that particular parcel will be, once we close, we will do a little bit of, have a little bit of cleanup on it, but it will be immediately put back on the market with the utility easement fully designated and outlined on the deed. So, that having been said, we do have a handful of parcels that remain open, and we have not been able to come to terms with them. And one in particular, to orient you here, is one hundred South, the Fairgrounds, and what we are referring to as parcel thirty. The landowner I have met with, representatives from Lebanon Utilities, and Structure Point has met with, and they are not willing to, they do not believe our valuation of the property is correct. And I was told very early on that he would not agree to sign the easement. So what we are asking for is approximately one point seven acres of easement along this property. Now, interestingly, that property is currently burdened and encumbered with a REMC pole line, and we have taken the position that if there is a pole line in existence, and we can't show that there's some document that evidences that pole line, then we're going to start from scratch as though it was not there. I tell you that only in that we are going to upsize the line, as you're all aware, and I do believe there are some valuation issues that should be taken into consideration there. Those were not in this instance. This was valued as though it were raw ground, and we've not been able to come to terms. This gives you a little better idea of where we're talking about, south side of one hundred South. So while we do have a handful of parcels, namely five, including this one that we are still working with, I'm here to report to Councilman Campbell that we have done all we can do on this parcel, and we have been, we're told very early in the process that we would need to, need to probably step into court. Not in a mean way, but they just, it's been very friendly conversations, but, and I understand that, these are not always the greatest processes or procedures for a utility or a landowner to go through. I do point out that there is an existing pole line on the property, and we are certainly going to upsize, but that's where we are to date. So my request for you this evening is to allow us to move forward with the filing of a condemnation action under the supervision of Mr. Shine and Krieg de Valt in order to move forward with a condemnation or imminent domain procedure with regard to parcel thirty. I will tell you that, given the number of parcels that we had, and we're still working on a few, that we're pretty pleased with our number where we are, especially given the parcel to the north of the park that had some significant challenges to it. There is a good possibility I will be back in front of you in the coming weeks with an update, and I'm not confident that we're going to be able to close out all of these parcels without getting into court, and that's sometimes the way it is. Parties can differ, and we need the assistance of a court to move forward. However, with regard to this evening, it's this parcel number thirty located on one hundred South that I'm requesting your assistance to move forward with this evening.
Jeff, is it fair to say that all of the parcels that we have remaining currently have utility lines already running through the area?
I believe most of them, but I'm going off of memory.
Grace.
They all do.
They all do, okay.
They all do.
And there's no existing right-of-way for REMC?
There is no existing easement for REMC that was recovered in our title work.
Just a handshake deal, they just did it.
Very common, very common. And again, we've tried to take a very, you know, what could happen, our plans are to take over that pole line, and rather this is go in and start putting sticks in the ground, nobody would probably notice that kind of thing. Where in this setting, that's not the right way to do it. And so, given that we are going to take over this pole line, we feel pretty strongly this is the way to go about it, and especially when we're going to upgrade, upgrade the pole size and line.
So the reason we need to proceed, not only with this one, but others in the future, again, this one's not recorded, it's a little different scenario, but the other ones that were, is an issue of we don't have enough width based on vertical? I mean, it's not, it's not the ground footprint, right, it's the height?
Well, each one, Mayor, is going to be a little different, but there may, in a number of cases, there is no recorded easement, or we may be given the design a little bit outside of the right-of-way. We did, you know, you'll hear a report later on in this process, we did compress some things in other areas and move, stay in right-of-way to avoid impacting property owners as much and save money for ratepayers. So each instance is a little different. Here, we need a little more space to accommodate this larger line than what probably could have been in existence or should have been in existence along here for REMC. So it's both, really. So we've opened up the scope of the easement just a little bit to accommodate what we will need now and in the future.
Okay.
Jeff, I had just a couple of questions, just for your clarification, imminent domain, and if it goes to court, those people are still compensated for their land, however, it may not be the compensation that they are desiring. Would that be accurate?
Correct. Correct. There's a process. We pay money into the, into the court. It's a great question and a great point, and we will, we have an appraisal that appraised this property. We pay that money into the court immediately, and that's held by the court, and then there are appraisers that are appointed and go out and say, hey, what's the valuation of this property? And that could go up or down based upon what their findings are.
Thank you. And it is so possible, even if we proceed with this, that that action could then force them to, not force, but they would be more likely to negotiate a price, because they may not be guaranteed what they're, because you were currently offering probably more than what the appraisal says, correct?
So, Mayor, my goal is always to resolve a case rather than leave it into the hands of litigation, and that's expensive for ratepayers, it could be expensive for the property owner. We're not talking about great deals of money here, and we can quickly chew through that from a litigation standpoint. Just because this entity would authorize the filing of this action doesn't mean that I'm running to the courthouse tomorrow to do that, I'm going to have another conversation with the landowner. This is where we are, this is what our offer is. Does that change once litigation is initiated, potentially? But right now, I have an appraisal in hand, and I'm bound by that. So absolutely, my hope would be to come to some terms. We've been, tried to even be very creative with this property owner, and have just not been able to do so. No fault of his, he's absolutely entitled to his opinion, and that's absolutely within his bounds, no fault to him.
We're just asking those questions, you know, no one likes to start an imminent domain process, but, you know, I think, I think you've clearly made, you've made it clear that you've tried all avenues and have not been able to come to an agreement with that, so. Any further questions from Jeff?
Does the property owner know that we are looking at possibly pursuing eminent domain? Do they know we're having a meeting tonight talking about this parcel?
I did not, I did not notify the property owner and say we're going to have this discussion this evening, no.
Why not?
I felt that he was aware that this was the next step in the process, not that we were coming before this body. Typically, in a utility situation, it wouldn't be done this way. We've got, the way this is set up with the authority transfer, I didn't view it as a substantive discussion for a property owner in this setting. I'm happy to do that, have that conversation and revisit that with him, and in the future, that's good to know. I don't know that I would encourage that nature discussion here, but I'm certainly willing to listen to how you'd like that done if we have a couple more of these in the future. This property owner, while not aware that I was coming here this evening, is aware that this is where we're headed with this, and we've had that discussion pretty early on.
You're going to let him know, so, I mean, it's not like, it's being hidden.
So, so, so our court rules would require the person be notified, number one, but as I mentioned, I'm going to have a conversation with the person, if not meet with him one-on-one, which I've already done, and explain where we are, and figure out what obstacles, if any, when and if this authority were granted.
Has that, has that property owner offered any kind of third-party appraisal? Not our appraisal, but one of his own?
No, they have, no, they have not.
Okay. What's, I mean, what's the gap in the valuation?
He has not provided a number.
Okay, all right.
I think you're seeing the problem here. Any public comment, questions, concerns? So Jeff, you said you would need a motion to proceed with an imminent domain procedure for parcel number thirty?
Yes, please, along County Road one hundred South.
Okay. Wouldn't someone like to make the motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we allow the utilities to go through the process of imminent domain on parcel thirty.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, for discussion?
Now, with this, I mean, this means we're looking at possibly taking to court now, like saying, hey, the council agrees to that, right? Because, I mean, nobody wants to take it by the court, right? At this point, nobody wants to have their land taken.
Well, it's not being taken, it's being compensated on what the court deems the property is worth. And it's, again, that's, that's down the road, it's, this is just the first step to begin the procedure.
Would you have to come to us again?
Not for this.
Not for this property, no, sir.
I mean, there's poles already on the land.
And making it clear, like, those poles will be, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Just barely.
So those poles, we're actually, we're not just putting new poles out there, then we just upgrade those as well with the REMC line on there, too, or would that just go away?
Yeah, there is a little complication there, but what we would do is we're going to be taking over that pole line from REMC, and we would be removing their poles and installing larger poles to accommodate the sixty-nine KV line. REMC's line would then be underbuilt on our pole, meaning their line or their wires would be under our transmission line. So we would then take over ownership of this, of this utility line, and they would have a connection point on our utility pole.
So would they be basically paying us rent to use our poles at that point, or we have to...
There's, there are pole attachment agreements for various utilities in the transfer or purchase of that, there are specifics on how we will do that. We've transferred ownership to pole, with pole lines with REMC before. There's another one that I believe is going to be a swap in this instance. The specifics of that, I can't tell you that I know. But oftentimes, when other utilities attach to our utility poles, there are pole attachment agreements where they lease on a quarterly or annual basis to attach their lines.
Okay, that is my question.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, utilities has the motion to proceed. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, last item I have here under new business is the Lebanon Fire Department additional appropriation requests. Now, we actually did not, this was not noticed in time, so this is just a general discussion. This will be noticed up for our next meeting, but I did want to have Chief Batts come and introduce what he is contemplating asking for at our next meeting.
Good evening, and I will keep this brief. I'd like to introduce the Boone County Locution Radio Interface Project. This was brought to the Boone County Fire Chiefs by the Whitestown Fire Department. This was brought to the Boone County Fire Chiefs by the Whitestown Fire Department. Locution is a proper name for automated dispatch. An automated dispatch would interface, it's basically software that would interface with our CAD system at the Boone County Sheriff's Office. There are several counties to our south and east that use Locution. Marion County, Hendricks County, Hancock County, Hamilton County, all use Locution. Hancock County has the latest version of this software. There was a small group that went down to see how it works. It's a very good product. So how, I'll give you the Cliff Notes on how it works. A 911 call would come into the dispatch center. If it's a fire and EMS call, it would, the address would be entered in, and they would hit an apply button. And the apply button would be used to set off the automated dispatch to contact the necessary fire and EMS units to make that response. Under the current system, when the call comes in, the dispatcher would enter it and have to individually dispatch each department and apparatus as it comes up in the CAD string. That can be very time-consuming to do that. So while the dispatcher can hit apply under Locution, they are free to do other things as the emergency progresses. This is exclusively for fire and EMS, it is not used on the law enforcement side. There's estimates that this is going to save between one and two minutes on dispatch time. Now, that may not seem like a ton of time, but it is in an emergency situation. The document that I sent you is a breakdown of the cost of Locution. I put together the formula that you see before you on how to pay for this project. The one-time payment, the overall initial cost for this is $174,555. I used a couple factors in breaking down this formula. One is run load and population. So right off the top, Centertownship, they would pay $20,000 towards this project, and then the other four municipalities and departments would absorb 90%. And that would be Boone County EMS, Witham Hospital, City of Lebanon, Whitestown, and Zinesville. Their share would be $34,275. And then the remaining 10% would be split between the Town of Advance, Jamestown, Perry Township, and Thorntown. And their contributions would be $4,364 each. So that brings us to the total of $174,555. There is a yearly maintenance fee that Sheriff Nielsen and the Boone County Sheriff's Office said that they would absorb on a yearly basis, so we would not have to cover that. I know that's a lot of information. I feel Locution is a very good, very good product. It's a good move for our county. It's been very successful in other counties. Do you have any questions?
Is it fair to say this is the next step?
This is the next step, the next evolution in dispatch for Boone County. This is taking us to the next level.
So improved response times?
Improved response times. We're looking at, you know, one to two minutes less in dispatch time with the Locution system. And this takes nothing away from what Boone County Dispatch is doing now. They're a very good dispatch center. We're not trying to say that they do a poor job. This is just a tool that will allow them to do a better job.
This will be paid for from the local income tax?
Yes, this would.
The public safety tax?
Yes, we would ask for an additional appropriation through Lit.
I am curious as to why the county wouldn't pay for the bill entirely, being a county system.
We asked the sheriff about that, we brought it to him. And we feel like there should be shared cost in this, because the greatest advantage is going to be for these emergency departments. This is going to take somewhat of the load off the dispatcher initially, so there's some benefits from the 911 side to have this program. But the most benefit comes to the emergency departments making the responses. So our taxpayers are going to benefit from this project.
You say emergency departments, you mean fire and EMS?
Fire and EMS, yes.
So but not police, correct?
But not police, they are dispatched differently than fire departments and EMS. We use a tone-based dispatch, they do not, they are just radioed directly. And that's not feasible for the way the fire and EMS service is set up. We have spoken to representatives from the other townships and municipalities, and everyone feels strongly about this, and they're ready to move forward with the project.
Have any of the other municipalities passed appropriations yet?
Yes, I believe Whitestown has. It's been discussed at the advisory board level and trustee level at Centertownship, and they have verbally committed, but I don't think they have finalized the resolution for the money.
Okay. You also are requesting a new vehicle, a fire inspection and investigation vehicle?
Yes, we would like to retire a 2003 Police Cruiser that we currently use in our inspection division and investigation. It's just at the end of its lifespan. The vehicle that we're requesting is not a take-home vehicle, it is not an emergency vehicle, would not have lights and sirens, but it would have a graphics package on it so we could recognize it as a Lebanon Fire Department vehicle. This vehicle would be very low mileage, that's why we would like to purchase it instead of lease it, and it would be used by our shift inspectors to go out and inspect commercial businesses in Lebanon. And it would also be used by our investigation division as well.
Okay. And the total number between those two items, and again, that Locution is a one-time-only cost, is $63,123.
Yes, and that's also with the $650 additional for the graphics package for the Explorer.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Again, we're not voting on this tonight, but just wanted to share...
I have a question on the vehicle. I'm assuming you're going to try to buy the vehicle here in Boone County, Lebanon?
Yes, we've gotten two quotes, one from Gene Lewis Ford and one from Bill Estes.
Good.
And the lower quote is with Gene Lewis Ford. We felt like it was important to buy locally.
Long as it's in the city, that's all that matters.
Gene Lewis Ford was very happy.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Appreciate the presentation. Again, we'll take that up at our next council meeting.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, dare I ask if there's any other new business coming for the council? No? Okay. With that, move on to claims, entertain a motion. We have motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second for this question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Claims are approved, and we entertain a motion adjourned.
Should we adjourn?
Motion adjourned in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned, thanks for watching. Again, appreciate everyone's time tonight.